This meeting of the Margate City Planning Board is called to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
Attention salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Clem Wazlaski.
Here.
Mike Richman.
Here.
Jim Galantino.
Here.
Margaret Guber Nalti.
Here.
Mike Cristaldi.
Here.
Craig Pomisano.
Here.
David Carter.
Here.
Despina Hess.
Here.
Remy Pelosi. Joe DiGiorolamo.
Yes.
Rich Patterson.
Here.
This meeting is being held in accordance with due public notice thereof and pursuant to the New Jersey State Sunshine Law. Notice of this meeting was advertised in the press and a copy of same has been posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. All applicants are hereby advised that should you receive board approval tonight, you must come forward and sign a form which informs you regarding the timing of receiving building permits and mercantile licenses. At the end of your case tonight, please see the board administrator to sign the two For the record, Despina Hess is here. Like to hear a motion for the approval of minutes of the October 29th, 2015 meeting and the November 5th, 2015 motion. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that one. One second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimous. Like to hear a motion for approval of decisions and resolutions. Number forty-three, 2015, East Shore Development. Number forty-four, 2015, Mark Trappiani. Number forty-five, 2015, Lori Kim and Trent Jones. Number forty-six, 2015, Sylvan and Mary Ann Kesselman. Number forty-seven, 2015, LLP Investments LLC. Number forty-eight, 2015, Decatur Court Town Homes Association.
Make a motion. One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. First case is Edward and Nina Pettit, Seventeen West Drive, Block 509.05, Lot 104, in the S-40 district, to grain a C variance for front setback for porch and possibly others. Taxes and water are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. Rubin?
Tom Collins recusing.
Tom Collins is recusing himself. Roger Rubin?
Mr. President, if I may ask you a question. I do. The subject property is a two-story, single-family house on a lot of 56 by 80 feet. The house is proposed to be demolished and replaced by the one in the submitted plans by George R.A. Thomas, architect, and the site plan by Ponzio Company. The proposed house would, of course, be built at FEMA-specified flood elevation and would contain four bedrooms and a third-floor family room, front porch, and rear yard at-grade permeable patio. The first floor of the house is proposed at elevation 12, NAVD 1988, which was approved at one foot higher than the required 11 by the base flood elevation committee consisting of Rubin, Galantino, and Cristaldi in order to obtain a sufficient crawl space in this rather high-elevation property and neighborhood. The house will then rise to the 28 feet over the approved first floor, which is permitted. Variance. The only variance is front setback for the porch. Per the 200-foot survey, the requirement is 22.05 feet back from the front property line. It is designed at 20.17 feet back, thus closer to the street than permitted by 1.88 feet or 23 inches. Comments? The proposed porch at 20.17 is virtually the same as the porch of the existing house, which is at 20.8, within seven and a half inches and indistinguishable difference. Two, the numerous ways this house improves on zoning make the porch variance de minimis. For example, the first-floor house wall is set over 28 feet of setback compared to 24.85 feet required. So one may say that 23 inches of porch is a good trade-off for almost three feet less building mass on the street. Three, landscaping overall at 49% greatly exceeds the 35% required, and front landscaping at 67% exceeds the required 60. allowable building coverage is 32.6% compared to a building designed at only 28. Also, I would point out there are a couple of anomalies in the 200-foot survey that argue in favor of this variance. For example, the lot to the right, Lot 102, has a quote "porch" which could conceivably be defined as a landing for steps and not a porch at all due to its size and the doorway-steps alignment. If this were removed from the calculation, the required average porch setback would become 19.48 feet, which would make the proposed 20.17 feet setback legal. As always, the board's visual inspection during site visits will help in evaluating whether or not impacts are created by the proposal. No conditions are suggested at this time.
Good evening. Brian Callahan of the law firm Callahan, Thompson, Thompson, on behalf of Ted and Nina Pettit, Seventeen West Colmar. Just for the record, all jurisdictional requirements have been met. Knowing that you have a full agenda, let me call Mr. Barnhart. I have two experts here today. I have John Barnhart and I have Terry Thomas who prepared the architectural plans. I'll call Mr. Barnhart first and let him walk you through the site and the variance relief.
Just state your name for the record.
John Barnhart.
You started a testimony. You're about to give this matter to the true guilty.
I do.
Thank you.
We need to go through his qualifications. John, briefly, why don't you walk him through the application?
Okay. Mr. Rubin's report pretty much spells it out, but what we're facing here is a 56-foot wide by 80-foot lot in a single-family zone, posing a two-and-a-half-story, single-family dwelling that will meet nearly every single one of your Balkan area standards with exception to the front porch setback. You can see that far the application package, the required front, average front yard setback approximately 22 feet. We are proposing a front setback to the porch of 20.17 feet. That setback is very consistent with the existing development. The existing porch at this property was 20.8 feet from the front property line. And with regard to justification of that type of a C variance, again, as Mr. Rubin's report identifies, there are a number of mitigating factors. The first being that the existing, the proposed building wall is back substantially greater than what would be otherwise permitted. Building coverage is lower than what would be otherwise permitted, and the landscape coverage exceeds the requirement. So I think those three factors, those three mitigating factors outweigh any potential negative impact as a result of the under-two-foot deviation that we're asking for with regard to that front porch setback. And also, as Mr. Rubin's report mentions, if you look at some of the other porches on this street that developed the requirement of the average front yard setback for porches, some of them arguably could be classified as not being porches and that you'd be measuring just to a building wall on at least one of those homes, which would reduce the average down below 20 feet, which would make this porch conforming. The point being that this is a very, very minor request. This is as clean of an application as you can get because you're asking for a porch that is functional and usable. That's it.
We had one other request.
Go ahead.
We were looking at a waiver of street trees. If you take a look at Colmar Circle, it comes on a bend. And in talking to our client, talking to the architect, we're concerned with the fact that if you're backing out, people come around that corner pretty quick, so that we're worried about a little bit of a site triangle issue in that particular thing. There's no real street trees on the street, so that was one of our concerns is the way that Colmar Circle lines up and how the people get to it. And the fact that coverage-wise and landscaping-wise, we're well over the requirement. It was a thought process as to making it a better planning alternative. And once again, we would just take the board's input, of course, but that was one of our requests after taking a look at it and taking a look at the aerial.
Say something.
I did note that there were no...
Just talk into the mic, please.
Yes, I did note when I traveled there to look at that site that there were no other trees along the street, and it is a very narrow, that really narrows, it's very narrow there than it is in any other spot on the street there, which I agree with counsel, what he's saying with regard to that tree. What kind of trees are going to be, Mr. Barnhart?
You were showing, clearly submitted, called out for a cherry.
Can I? Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I'd like to hear.
I really don't understand. I do not understand the logic of it. A tree has a trunk. When it's planted, it's a fairly narrow trunk.
Wait, didn't we go over the definition of a tree last meeting?
Yeah, we didn't. We never finally concluded it. It's got a two-inch trunk. The ordinance says one and three-quarter inches. Ten years later, it's three or four inches. The head of the tree is way above where any cars have a visibility problem. It's a circle that's barely in need of some more trees. This is an opportunity to get trees, and that's a straightaway. You know, if you were in one of the corners, I would say maybe you'd have a half of an argument, but you're sort of on the straightaway. It's narrow, but so what? I mean, should we get rid of, there are poles, there are electric poles, there are street signs.
We just throw it out, Mr. Rubin. We look at it, you come around that corner, it's a bend, it's a narrow street, there's nothing else there, so it's...
Well, I think as to the argument that nothing else is there, that's part of our point, is everything, when we come up with these rules, they're like hundred-year rules, that there's nothing there, but as the neighborhood improves, the trees start to appear.
I thoroughly agree with Roger. What little visual impairment they provide is negligible.
What'd you say, Clem?
He agrees with Roger.
He agrees with that.
Also, the trees may lose their leaves, four or five months later.
That's part of the definition of a tree, yeah.
It is.
We'll move on.
Any other witnesses?
Not unless the board has any other questions.
Are you calling any other witnesses?
I have the architect in case you need him.
Well, no, I just had, I wanted to make sure there was access to the backyard, but if there's access to the backyard, then I'm satisfied.
Yes. So are we voting on or not the tree? Chairman?
Trees, yes.
Okay.
Trees are in?
In. Yes, they're not asking for a variance, a waiver for the trees.
They are not?
They're not asking for a variance.
Do you want to vote on that, or do you want to...
Well, I'm counting votes, so I'm looking like trees are staying. I would probably predict that. So since you have seven applications, I don't need to vote on trees.
So the board has no other questions. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Public portion is closed. Any comments from the board? Take a vote, please.
Clem Wazlaski?
Wait. It's a very minor request. Did I forget? Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, told me to take a...
Yeah, what's the matter with you?
Jimmy made the motion. Clem seconded it.
Clem Wazlaski?
You're sure? It's a very minor request, and I see no negative aspects. I vote to approve.
Mike Richman?
I think the benefits outweigh the detriments, so I'm going to vote for it.
Jim Galantino?
Hello, Madam Second, new city clerk for the city of Margate. Welcome to the city of Margate, city clerk.
Thank you, Jim.
That's a public service announcement. I don't see any detriment to the city on this proposed project, so I vote yes.
Margaret Guber Nalti?
I vote in favor of the application. I see no negative impact.
Mike Cristaldi?
I also vote in favor of it. I see no negative...
Craig Pomisano?
I also vote in favor of the project. No negative impacts at all.
Rich Patterson?
I also vote in favor for the said reasons.
Application passes, seven to nothing.
Next case is Justin Kovacsik, 616 North Claremont Avenue, Block 904.02, Lot 12, in the S-40 district, to grain a C variance for side setback and possibly others. Taxes and water are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. Rubin? Roger Rubin?
I do. The subject property is 60 feet wide by 67.25 feet deep, totaling 4,035 square feet. Presently, the left side of the house is being elevated to flood level, and the right side, which contained a garage, bedroom, laundry room, and powder room, all at grade level, has been demolished. It is proposed herein via the submitted plans drawn by architect Thomas Shepper to replace the right side with a garage at grade level encompassing the identical footprint of the demolished structure, and with a new master bedroom suite above and an extra room which may be a home office for the owner's contracting business. Behind the garage at first-floor level, there will be a replacement laundry room and a powder room. This project is being done in two stages, as will be explained by the applicant, to expedite the family's ability to occupy the house as there is a new Kovacsik arriving shortly, actually present in the room, and they are presently doubling up with parents elsewhere in Margate. The left-side elevation and reconstruction was approved by right and permits have been duly applied for and issued. It should also be pointed out that the most significant variance relates to the side setback of the second floor only on the right side, not to the first level, which under current zoning could have been built in place due to slab floor construction. Variance is required. Right-side setback for the new second floor only, 10 feet required versus 8 feet 4 and 1/2 inches, as shown. Combined side setbacks, 22 feet required versus 11 feet 2 and 1/2 inches. Parking spaces within the garage, 18 feet required, it is 17 feet as drawn. New rear yard patio roof, 6 feet 11 inches as drawn versus 13.45 feet rear setback required. And front landscaping, 60% required, it is 58% now, would be down to 50% with new driveways. Comments? The second-floor right-side variance is the significant one. Board member visits are important as always. Keep in mind that the demolished garage structure was in the same footprint and was 16 feet above grade to the rooftop. It was 16 feet from grade to the rooftop. The proposed right wall will be 27 and 1/2 feet from grade to the roof peak, but only 18 feet in length from grade to the roof eve. Number two, that right wall is actually set at 8 feet 4 and 1/2 inches from the right property line, about eight inches further away from the right property line than the demolished 7.7-foot setback. Three, the neighborhood pattern is similar to this house, with all having been built about the same time in the 1970s with similar setbacks. Four, there will be four off-street parking spaces replacing just two, and the house will become completely flood-resistant. Combined side setbacks relate to open space, et cetera, and the combined setbacks are the same, actually about eight inches wider, as stated, albeit to a slightly higher level. Six, the garage size, the depth variance is a judgment call for discussion between the board and the applicant as to whether an adjustment can or needs to be made. Seven, additional improvements to the site that they've submitted includes elimination of a great deal of concrete. Some of you may know the previous owners were concrete people. And replacement by permeable landscape areas as well as other more attractive paving materials. As to the front landscaping percentage variance, it may be possible to eliminate this by reducing the front walk width, excuse me, the front walk width and by designing grass strips in the driveways. Finally, there is a modesty to this project, keeping the footprint, making in addition only to the top of an existing portion of the house, modernizing, flood-proofing, and improving permeability, and ending up with a house that conforms to the style and scale of other upgraded houses in this neighborhood. This house has only 2,600 square feet of floor space, not counting the garage. If torn down, on this lot size, a two-and-a-half-story home with 3,500 square feet could be built with free-standing garage. No conditions suggested at this time other than eight sets of revised plans with complete schematic details, which were submitted at the staff committee level but not within the board packets, and also if there is any changes by virtue of discussion about the garage depth. That's it.
State your name for the record.
Justin Kovacsik.
State your due direction. Just sort of a testimony. You're about to give this matter to the true guilty.
I do.
Justin, could you make sure you state your due questions?
I'm just going to raise it up a little bit.
We have board members that can show you how to use it.
As Roger did a good job of summarizing everything, the existing house is shown on the lower board. You can see where the existing location was, at the single-car garage, as well as looked like it was previously either a bedroom or, I don't know what they used it for. That's the area where we really wanted to redesign and raise it up above flood elevation like the main house, and really build the same footprint that's there now except making it a two-car garage, keeping the laundry room and the powder room in the same locations. And the whole goal was, because of the size of the existing house, was to create more space, since my wife is pregnant, we're expecting our first child, to create a master suite and a home office above the garage so we could have three guest rooms in the main home. As Roger said, the main variance required is on the right side of the property where the garage is, the AP from the property line. Everything else is remaining primarily as is.
Could you go into what Roger's questions about the depth of the garage and the front landscaping, if you could modify them to eliminate the variances?
Sure. The garage is actually about 17 feet 4 inches, I believe Roger said the requirement is 18. We did it that way to maintain, to keep the front of the house from protruding too far out towards the street. We wanted to really maintain that existing footprint, so that's why the garage is only, you know, eight inches different from what the requirement is. Also, with regard to the front landscape requirement, our intent is not to pour a solid driveway, which is what's shown on the print. We're primarily going to do two driveways, drive lanes, have a little bit more grass in the front yard, even though it has a sizable front yard as it is. There was a substantial amount of concrete on this property that we had, so the goal was to create a lot more green space, A for our dogs and B for our future sons, so...
So do you think with the changes you're making, you will meet the requirement?
I don't know. I think we'll be pretty close. I think we'll get closer, but I don't know that we'll get to the requirement, so I'm assuming the variance will still be needed, but it'll definitely, we'll, you know, be a lot more over the 50%, closer to the 60.
Please thank you.
Figure out the calculations. 3 foot straight. I think you should make it 10% of the front area is not that much. We're talking about maybe 50, 60 square feet. You should easily get it with the strips.
I think the intent is you could probably go to a paver drive lane for each one and then create a small walking path to the front door. That's the idea. So I want to really try to maximize the green space in the front yard, and it's a nice sizable front yard, so...
All right, so you're willing to accept that condition?
Absolutely. I prefer it.
So we'll take that variance request out, then?
Correct.
Okay.
Agreed.
Any questions from the board?
With the garage variance? I didn't quite follow your conversation.
No, he didn't agree with the garage. He wants to keep the garage variance in there. Go ahead, Roger.
Justin, did you have mounted up the floor plans somewhere on there? Okay. Explain to the board, please, first of all, explain to the board, you can take that microphone out and hold it in your hand, that the powder room and the other room in the back are at first-floor elevation, not at grade. Is that correct?
That's correct. So here at the grade level, there's a, you see the set of stairs that brings it up to the new elevation of the home, which this home's already been lifted. And this is all being framed up, so it's seamless trenches and all the same elevation. And then you actually would step down, which is part of the reason why the garage has actually shrunk down a little bit, because we need these steps to get down. So the total depth of the garage back to this wall right here is 18 feet 4 inches. This is the portion in question right here where we create that corridor coming into the powder room and the laundry.
And would it be harmful to the floor plan if you had to shove it back another foot in terms of access to those laundry room areas?
It would be for this portion because this corridor is an existing passageway and it's already a little bit narrow, so I like to keep that as wide as we possibly can.
I think it's fairly de minimis. I don't know what the board thinks. Small matter. I think it's technical. Say, you're right. Say it out loud. You're right.
I said there really aren't that many cars on the road today that require the 18 feet.
Except for...
Except for Thomas. Antique station light, yeah.
26 feet.
Okay. Any other questions from the board or concerns? Anyone from the public here to have any comments? Public portion is closed. Any other discussion from the board?
The conditions would be eight sets of revised plans conforming the front landscaping, and that those, the detailed plans that you didn't submit to the board, you submit completely, completes schematics.
We're all revised to show the revised driveway design and front walkway, and we're eight signed and sealed sets.
We need eight sets of everything you have mounted there, but with the revised driveway.
Yeah, I'll just modify to show the site plan so you can see the walkway and the drive lanes as well.
Okay, good.
I'd like to hear a motion.
I vote in favor of the application. I really see no negative impacts onto the neighborhood. With the concrete gone, the greener space brought in, a newer, modern design, and another young family in Margate, I think this is all the attributes of being positive for the neighborhood, so I vote yes.
Clem Wazlaski?
Well, there are a number of variances, but I don't think any of them are of any great significance, and the improvements far outweigh any negative effect they might have. I vote in favor.
Mike Richman?
Yeah, I concur with Clem. I think that especially back in that neighborhood there, it'll be a nice improvement. I agree with it.
Jim Galantino?
Sure drove you crazy, huh, Justin? Remember the day he walked in my office and I went, "I don't know." You could do that. That was what, eight months ago?
It was, it was.
I'm glad to see you here. He elevated his structure. He really was very close on elevating it, and I said elevate it because you're going to be over the 50%, and he agreed, so now we're fully compliant, which I congratulate you. Thank you very much. And I don't see any detriment to the neighborhood on this variance application, so I vote yes. Thank you.
Margaret Guber Nalti?
It's a positive to the neighborhood, the elevation. I like the fact that if the house was torn down and we built a new house, it would be much larger than what is existing. I vote in favor of the application. Good luck.
Mike Cristaldi?
I see no negatives with it, and I think it's going to be an add to the neighborhood, so I vote yes.
Rich Patterson?
I vote yes for the same reasons as Tom Collins.
The application passes, seven to nothing. Justin, will you come sign, please?
Next case is Patricia Perry, 310 North Lancaster Avenue, Block 51301, Lot 16, in the S-40 district, to grain a C variance for front yard setback, side setbacks, and possibly others. Taxes and water are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. Rubin? Roger Rubin?
Yes, I do. The subject property is a two-story, split-level, single-family house on a lot of 50 by 81, totaling 4,050 square feet. The house has three bedrooms and a family room, a front first-floor porch on the right side, and a concrete at-grade patio in the rear yard left position. Per the submitted plans of architect Don Zachar and the site plan of Ponzio Company, the applicant's proposed to elevate the house so the lowest habitable floor would be at 16.4 NAVD 1988 compared to the FEMA maximum per Margate ordinance of elevation 11. The stated purpose is to create garage space under the right side of the house. Currently, there is only one highly undersized space, and there would now be two legal-sized spaces, one in the garage and one in front, and for storage space and indoor stairway access from the garage under the left side. The plans show total building height at 28 feet above elevation 12, but the required elevation is 11. The architect has agreed he can lower the house to elevation 11 for the first floor and still have sufficient head height underneath, so revised plans will be required accordingly, and therefore is no height variance. In addition to the house elevation, they are proposing an enlarged front porch... front porch across the entire front of the house, and a rear elevated deck at the location of the concrete at-grade patio. Variance is required. Per state law, a house may be elevated only three feet above the BFE, in this case, to elevation eleven, which is three feet above the BFE of eight. And you can only preserve your nonconformities if you limit the elevation to eleven. As a result, with regard to the top five point four feet of the house, variances are needed for all nonconformities, including right-side setback, existing house, left-side setback, existing house, and combined-side setbacks. Also, the front setback, sixteen point twenty-eight feet required versus fifteen point five to the top of the elevated house. Finally, distance to the house on the left, nine and a half feet versus ten required. All of those variants, that package of variances are all related to the state law that says you can't lift the house more than three feet above elevation eleven. But there is no height variance. Okay, the second variance is both-side setbacks and combined setbacks as above for the enlarged front porch, which extends across the entire front of the house and which meets, does meet the front setback. And finally, regarding the rear elevated deck, at the elevated first floor level, it needs a left-side setback as well. It does meet the required rear. Comments? As always, site visits are important to ascertain impacts, if any. Two, revised plans should be submitted to show the first floor at elevation eleven and total height of twenty-eight from eleven. Three, distances are quite great to houses' rear and right side, as well as across Lancaster Avenue. Four, in your site visits, discern if the rear elevated deck might negatively impact the backyard of the house to the left. If so, could it be shifted a bit, at least to meet the eight-foot side setback requirement? Finally, if approved, upgraded landscaping to code standards in terms of tree and shrub plantings should be a condition also requiring amended details.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin. Good evening. Eric Olson, on behalf of the applicant Patricia Perry. With me tonight, testifying is John Barnhart, licensed professional engineer, and Don Zachar, licensed New Jersey architect. I'd like to have them squirt in, please. Starting off first, if the board doesn't mind, I'd like to wave Mr. Barnhart's requirements to have the qualifications accepted. He's testified before this board on many occasions.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, John, would you walk us through the variance plan as presented?
Sure. Property is located in the S forty district. The lot size is fifty by a depth of eighty-one feet, site being just over four thousand square feet. The yellow shaded area that you see on the plan is the existing single-family home that is being elevated as a result of trying to meet the requirements of FEMA, and also to provide parking and storage beneath the existing structure. As a result of bringing the building beyond the three-foot maximum elevation requirement that Mr. Rubin discussed in his report, a list of what we would consider existing nonconformities then become variances, as enumerated in Roger's report. The majority of those variances deal with side yard. The existing building is just over six feet from the left side, and approximately between three, two point nine and three feet on the right side. Again, their existing conditions, the proposal is to go straight up, so those setbacks will stay the same on both sides. However, they are variances, because we're proposing to go higher than what the governor's order permits with regard to elevation of the building. The new development or new construction on the site is a frame deck in the rear of the property, and then a framed porch across the entire frontage of the site, and then obviously stairs to access that framed porch. Both the new framed porch in the front and the rear deck will meet their setbacks with regard to rear yard, to the deck in the back, and with regard to front yard, to the porch in the front. But those decks do require side yard setbacks, because we're proposing to follow the line of the existing building wall. So the side yard setback for that deck would be a variance, and the side yard setback for the front porch on both sides creates a new variance on the site. We think, obviously, you know, with this being a post-Sandy home elevation case, we think the benefits of this deviation clearly outweigh any potential detriments. This is getting a building out of harm's way, and is also providing two off-street parking spaces where really no legal spaces currently exist on the site. And the front and rear decks are, we think, a beautification of the building. The front porch going across the front of the site helps to mitigate that high elevation of the proposed building by creating some architecture element that I get Mr. Zachar can speak about. This is, you know, you've seen a lot of these. Fortunately, in this case, the existing structure, when you do elevate it to get the storage and parking that we are proposing beneath it, does not turn into a height variance as well. We've seen, as you know, sometimes that occurs, and that is not the case with this application. Roger points out one specific topic with regard to the rear deck, and that question being the negative impacts of that deck on the neighboring property. You can see the footprint of the building to the left on this plan. You know, my opinion of it is, if you pulled it back and made it conforming at eight feet, it's really essentially the same impact to that neighbor as it is at six feet. So Mrs. Perry would like to keep it in the line with the side of the building there. Works better with the existing windows and things.
I happen to agree with Roger on that issue. Is there a hardship if they moved the whole deck over two feet? I mean, not to make the deck smaller, but to keep the same-sized deck and move it back. I mean, you're...
Is there a hardship? No, it's certainly not a hardship.
You're gonna be spinning on the people's heads next door.
I'm getting the nod that we can do that. So we can pull that side of the deck to eight feet to make that setback meet the minimum required for the zone. So that, the request for setback to that deck would no longer be necessary. That's really, you know, down to the liberty point, is that we think, again, a pretty clean application. There's a number of nonconformities, but they're all a result of taking this building up to get it out of harm's way.
Just, how high's the ceiling in the garage? I wasn't sure of the plans. It seemed like you had an eighteen-foot ceiling or sixteen-foot ceiling and some crazy thing in the garage.
Don can speak to that for you.
Okay.
I didn't really hear the question.
I just, I couldn't understand the plans as to, you said you needed to raise it up so high, so there was plenty of room in the garage. And it looks to me like you've got twelve feet, fourteen feet, something inside the garage. Looks like you have nine feet on the room next to it. It just seemed...
Well, that's predicated on elevation twelve as the base number.
I can't hear you. Say it.
Since we have to elevate the building no higher than twenty-eight feet above eleven, that will lower the height of the ceiling of the garage.
So what will the height of ceiling in the garage be?
And the ceiling of the passageway from the other side storage area to access the steps. So I believe that the garage will probably have about a nine and a half-foot ceiling.
Okay.
And the other side, where the stairs are, the passageway to get to the stairs will be approximately eight and a half to nine feet.
Okay.
So in addition to elevating the building, the entire structure will receive a new foundation with proper flood vents. The total structure will be rehabilitated in terms of proper egress windows. The windows that exist now don't meet the requirement, so for life safety issues, we will be adding smoke detectors, changing certain windows where they're necessary to provide proper egress windows for life safety in case of a fire. We intend to vastly improve the appearance of the exterior by re-siding and putting a stone facade on a lower level. Is there feedback from the microphone? Am I holding it too close?
Too close.
Sorry. So our joint P four shows the four elevations in the rehabilitated state, showing new siding, new windows, the stone veneer in the front, a much nicer garage door, new windows, new lighting. And of course, we'll have to adhere it to the landscape requirements of Margate, so the entire site will comply with the landscape requirement in terms of trees and shrubs.
That's fine. I already had the question on the garage. Nobody has any other questions. I don't think anybody, you have a question.
I do have a question.
Wait a minute.
You're at five-three at grade level, so your floor inside is going to probably be at six. I'm just gonna guess out here, you're gonna be at six, so that'll bring your height in that room to eight feet rather than nine. Because if you're a curb at five...
Correct.
So you're gonna be probably at six, I'm gonna...
Yeah, we're gonna pitch up slightly from the curves, jump up one inch at the garage door, so it's somewhere around eight or so.
Sort of bring that down in there. Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Anyone here from the public like to comment? Public Board's disclosed. Any other board discussion? Any conditions?
The conditions are eight sets of revised plans showing movement of the rear deck to eight feet from the left side. Show the first floor at, I'm sorry, show the house height to be twenty-eight feet over elevation eleven, and show or notate that all trees and shrubs are to comply to ordinance.
Rog, one more thing. Rog, over here. There's two curb cuts. There's gonna be one that's the existing and then a new one. So the existing would have to be put back to the curb, because the new one's gonna be built onto the right side.
Yeah.
Do you want to make that a condition that that has to be put back into place and removed?
Got it?
I don't understand. I'm sorry.
Close the existing curb cut, because you're building a new one.
That's correct.
Yeah.
We're not gonna have two, just one.
Okay.
Right.
Motion?
Tom Collins?
You know, when you look at this and you see all these variances, it drives you a little crazy. But as Roger very aptly stated, most of them are just basically because of the house raising and our state law. Other than that, the variances are really very de minimis. I see no negative impact on the neighborhood. I think by the renovations and the upgrades in the exterior and the aesthetics of the building, that it'll have a major positive impact on the neighborhood. So I vote in favor.
Clem Woslski?
This is another project that we have, that Sandy has given us. And I think we just have to live with the various things that that necessitates. I basically agree with what Tom said. I vote in favor.
Mike Richman?
I mean, there's a lot of variances. But at the same time, none of the neighbors seem to be concerned about it. And I think it's a nice project. I'm gonna vote yes.
Jim Gallantino?
If the board noted that we have tried to get around this state law in reference to the three-foot maximum, we've asked for some guidance on that, to try to alleviate this variance, Clem, from being coming to the board all the time. We feel, Roger and I feel, that this would move cases forward without coming to get a variance. But I think we are, well, anyhow, the way I see it, that I'm glad to see this applicant come forward, and it's a nice application, and I see no detriment, and I hope the construction moves forward.
Margaret Cubernaldi?
I approve of the application for the same reasons as previously stated by Mr. Woslski.
Mike Cristaldi?
As Clem stated, you know, it's another get from Sandy. People are given hardships with these that start to pick the houses up, and it's very aggravating for them. I approve the application.
Rich Patterson?
I also approve the application for the...
Thank you.
Previously.
Application passes seven to nothing.
Next case is Timothy Kohler, 107 North Union Avenue, lot three twenty-one, lot nine, in the S thirty district, to grain of sea variance for left side, combined sides, and rear setback, and possibly others. Taxes and order are current, and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. Rubin?
Roger Rubin? I do. The subject property is an existing, one-story, two-bedroom house on a lot of forty-one by eighty, which is thirty-two eighty square feet. And it is proposed by the plan submitted herein by William McLeese, architect, to elevate the house to eleven feet, to elevation eleven NAVD nineteen eighty-eight, with the second floor to be added, with the resultant house to have five bedrooms, a large second-floor rec room, first-floor front porch with deck above, and no third habitable level. The existing two-car driveway would be lengthened to accommodate the three cars needed for a five-bedroom house. The proposed second floor would sit on the first-floor walls, including a new front deck off of the proposed recreation room. Variances: left-side setback applicable only to the new second floor. Minimum is five feet, and proposed meets the first-floor existing setback of three feet seven inches. This applies to the second-floor left-side wall, as well as the left side of the new front deck at that level. Next variance: combined-side setbacks, fifteen point one seven feet required versus fourteen point seven, fourteen feet seven inches regarding, again, only the new second floor. And finally, rear yard setback, sixteen feet required versus five feet three inches, second floor only. Comments? There is no doubt this proposal is an aesthetic upgrade and improvement that will benefit the neighborhood due to the flood elevation and architectural features. Second, regarding the left-side setback, this being next to the new house built after Sandy on the left, the board's site visits will inform as to impacts, if any, of the shortage of one feet three inches on a taller house. There is an intervening driveway about ten feet wide on the right side of that house. Three, the combined-side setback variance relates to open space and air and light. Four, the rear setback variance, second floor only, is the most significant. Board members should walk back there to see how this relates to houses' rear, left, and right. It is projected several feet further back than the new left-side house, and could have impacts as to light and air, as well as building mass, especially to rear yards, as well as windows of adjoining houses. Building coverage is not a variance, but it is forty-one point seven percent compared to thirty-eight point six percent permitted, proposed as two stories instead of one. Also, the house is about twenty-six feet wide, so extra length would not appear to be justified by narrowness. In any case, the applicant can testify to the need for the rear yard variance to assist the board in its determination. If approved, just a condition that all code-required landscape materials should be included by notation on revised plans.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin. Eric Olson, on behalf of the applicant Timothy Kohler. With me tonight is William McLeese. He's a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. Bill, just get squirt in.
Say your name for the record.
William C. McLeese.
By your last name, please.
M.C., capital L, E.E.S.
Just prior to Mr. McLeese testifying, we want to make one note with regard to the variance for the rear yard setback. We had originally requested a twelve-foot setback. In discussing this matter with the city, as well as with the neighbor, the applicant has requested to amend the application to a twelve-foot setback rather than what we're asking for, the five-foot three inches.
More than the second floor, the back?
Correct. So although it's still a variance, it's a four-foot variance as opposed to what we were asking for originally. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rubin. Mr. McLeese has testified before numerous boards in the state of New Jersey, so unless the board wants his qualifications, I'd ask that he be qualified as an expert in the field of architecture.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name again, William McLeese. The property we're talking about this evening is 107 North Union. It's lot nine in block three twenty-one. Timothy Kohler approached us in August regarding an addition to his property, and obviously, excuse me, to bring it up into compliance with FEMA requirements. The addition is intended to give him four bedrooms for expanding family while also creating office space on his first floor. I know the application and Roger's report had mentioned five bedrooms. That was a... That was apparently a mistake on my behalf. We were kind of quick trying to get it in to the board in August. It's his intent as part of this application is to create the office on the ground floor for homework.
But you're still leaving 3 parking spaces, right? You'll end up with 3 parking spaces?
4 bedrooms, I believe, requires 2 parking spaces, does it not?
I understand that, so are you going to cut the parking spaces back to 2?
We're going to stick with the 2 that we have.
That's correct. Okay.
So, going through the property, as Eric has touched on, the existing side yard, 3 foot 7, rear yard today is 5 foot 3, and our side yard with the driveways, 11. What we're doing is basically building directly on top, as you've heard with the other applications here this evening, on the structural walls, therefore requiring the 3-foot 7-inch setback on the left-hand side, and again, meeting the existing building wall on the driveway side as well. As you can see from the elevations, the existing building is being raised up to comply with flood requirements, so the first floor is at elevation 11. We will be extending the existing foundation up unless after lifting the building, we find the foundation's not in adequate condition, in which case we'll replace it in kind, but our initial investigations indicate that it would be adequate to build on top of. So we're proceeding that way for the time being. Looking at the design, obviously, it's another seashore-type design, shingle style with Cedar Impression siding and Warden Batt siding at the upper floor, and dimensional shingle roof. Porches on the front...
Could you move that over a little bit?
Sure. The porches on the front are stacking over the porches below, the small cupola area that's being created on the front with the metal roof accent, and...
Could you show where the new rear would be?
Sure. What we're talking about today with the neighbors to the west is cutting this in...sorry?
I can't see. Could you use the color picture down below or not?
Oh, sure. What we talked about doing is setting this back an additional 7 feet, so that the building wall will be there on the second floor. It was suggested by Mr. Pesci, the neighbor next door, that we pursue a minimum slope roof for that first-floor area, so we hold a 512, either a shed or a hip roof on the back there, to try to maximize the additional...
512 is not required on the first floor.
Okay, then we can go even less. Obviously, it'd be shingled, so we've got some limitations there with how low we can go, but we can look at some...
So has your neighbor agreed to this?
This is what we discussed, yeah, I'm sure you'll hear during public comment.
Okay.
Happy to take any questions if you have any. Yes, sir.
I'm looking at the floor plan. What did you change to eliminate the 5th bedroom?
The first...yeah, sure. The first floor was indicating a bedroom, the smaller bedroom on the first floor, which is adjacent to the stairs?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Adjacent to the stairs was shown as a bedroom in the plans.
Yeah.
It was not his intent to have a 5th bedroom. He doesn't want to add the additional driveway space. He doesn't need the additional bedroom, he wants a home office. So that's going to become an office.
So what did you, other than change the name of the room, what did you do?
We took the bed out. If we have to...
You have a closet in there?
If we have to remove a closet, we can remove a closet. I'm not playing a shell game. He truly does want an office.
Okay.
Can that wall be moved up here instead of...
I would suggest removing the closet.
That's fine.
Could you move that wall up?
This wall?
Will you remove the closet, move that wall up to make that room...
To give the additional closet to the rear, we can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm saying to make it less likely of a bedroom.
Sure. Yeah.
What's the objection to adding another parking spot? Just out of curiosity.
I don't think he wants to...there's not a lot of green space in Margate, obviously, as you all know. I don't think he really wants to give the additional green space up. I think we're already over on our coverage as it is with building coverage, not that we're increasing that, but I think it's simply, he's trying to minimize his costs and the work and try to get a house that's going to be functional for his growing family in the long term and not end up with a concrete side yard. So...
I mean, there's, you know, you can use those...
Grass creep?
You know, the paper blocks that the grass grows and all that stuff. But you're going to, that's definitely going to be an office on the first floor.
Yes. I have no problem moving the wall up and eliminating closets.
When you designed this, did you look at the possibility of maybe just tearing it down and starting new? Basically, the reason I'm asking that is, this is a typical house that, in its day, on its lot in Margate, they chose to spread it out, so they maximized their lot, and we didn't have the height and the different heights. So now what people are doing is, they're taking these down, getting our green space back, which you don't have, and building a new house and going up, and conforming a lot more. You're trying to get the old standard and then plop a new house on top of an old one. It's a lot.
I don't think...
There's no room, there's no clearances, there's no egress. If you had major fires of the neighbors, I mean, this whole plot plan the way it is, am I right? It's tight.
There's obviously certain limitations that come with the existing property as it is. One of those, of course, being the side yard condition. We can, of course, talk about new construction, but that was never in the cards when I was involved in it. I don't know that that's in his budget, and it's easy to say it would be nice to take the house down, but obviously, there's economic situations that come along with that. The rear yard is a function of, just like you said, the age of the house and the previous planning approach. I think, as you heard from Roger's testimony, the adjacent house is situated with a driveway on that side, so there's actually space between the houses, and I'm not suggesting we should make use of the neighbors' light and air, but there certainly is a situation, there certainly is an area where egress is not an issue. I don't see a problem with fire department access around the house in an emerging condition. Obviously, with what we're doing at the rear, setting that second floor further back, further improves the condition from what was originally proposed. So I don't know that there's egress or access issues in that regard. It is a tight site, but it's no different than many of the other tight sites in the area. We're just trying to make the best use of his property for him and have a functional house that's going to work for him in the long term.
Mr. Lee, please. The gable ends that you have on the two-side elevations...
Yes.
...emphasize and add to the bulk of the house in an area where you're requiring a variance. If, at least on the left-hand side, the gable was eliminated, the face she ran straight through, would have much less impact on the adjacent neighbor, even though, as you say, there's a 10-foot driveway there. It visually increases the mass of that house considerably.
Yeah, I don't think we would have a problem eliminating that. I'm sure we could work with that.
Could you show us what Clem's referring to?
What Clem's referring to is, as you can see from this view, we've got a roof on either side. That would be this gable and this gable. Clem's referring to that cross gable, if that were eliminated, because obviously, with the wall running up, that's creating, that's increasing the mass on that side, so...
Are you losing any interior space by doing that?
We're losing interior volume, but...
But not living space?
We were talking about a cathedral ceiling, but you don't need a cathedral ceiling in order to enjoy the space.
So living space, it doesn't affect it?
Right, no, it's fine.
Did you say on the rear, the 7-foot roof that will be created over the first floor?
That's correct.
You're going to put a...
We were looking at doing a shed roof?
Shed roof or something.
To try to minimize the impact of that mass as well?
How about if you hipped the...
Shed.
The second-floor rear roof? That would decrease the shadowing on the neighbor to the rear.
Sure. It's, it deviates from the style a little bit, but if it's at the rear, you know, it's a minimal impact. I don't think that would be a problem.
Thank you.
All right, Raj, I got a couple of questions too. So he's already cut this up pretty much. Did he reduce the amount of variance he's requesting now?
The, let's see...
Use your mic.
No, it wasn't...I'm sorry. It's the same variances, but he reduced the degree of the rear variance by cutting 7 feet off the house. But it's on the second, yeah, on the second floor. Nothing on the first floor was a variance anyhow. Nothing.
But also for the lighting air purposes, he's cutting off that back roof?
And he's hipping the rear...
And he's getting rid of that broadside on this side. So as far as impact goes, he's making a lot of concessions, which...
Yeah, how's that going to read in? Okay.
Clem? Excuse me, one second. Clem, were you saying, on the second floor, where we're cutting that back in, putting a hip on the back there?
Yes.
To let more light in?
Right.
Less shadowing on the neighbor. Get rid of the 2 gables and cut in the back to a hip.
Yeah.
And leave a lot more air and light in.
That's almost as good as having the complete 16-foot setback. That hip idea was...
Just cut that, make it a hip and a lot more air and light in.
Accomplished a lot.
What is any personal questions?
The neighbors who have been very kind to discuss this project with us are here. Mr. and Mrs. Pesci may wish to speak, so the applicant has nothing further other than that the applicant will modify the design as requested with the additional length coming off the back, which we know is still a variance, but it's not as intense. We still need a variance for the side yard, which we would ask that be granted as applied for, and then the modification to the gable to cut down the mass as requested by Mr. Waszleski. With that, the applicant rests.
Anyone here for the public like to comment? Please, morning, please.
Joseph Pesci. Joseph Michael Pesci. P as in Paul, E.S.C.E. 109 North Union, Margate. Yes. Yes, thank you. Hello, everyone. Yes, as has been covered, we originally did have opposition to the full extension of the second floor back through the setbacks. There is a 5-foot setback existing. We were concerned about the air quality, the light coming in, and of course, just the aesthetics of that general area, knowing that with the mass being there, that it would impede on the, you know, just the quality of the outdoor living area that we do have behind the house. I have to say, just in listening to the board, I didn't fully understand the implications of some of the items that were also brought up here as far as the egress. I'm not sure if that's a safety concern exactly, or what might have been suggested there. Is there any clarification you can give me on that as to why that might be a concern? Can I ask that question?
Tom, you want to answer?
I brought that up, well, first of all, my father was a fire chief, so I'm very safety-conscious in Atlantic City. And when you build that whole mass second floor and you have very narrow alleys, if, even if a burglar got in there and a cop got back there, there's no safety. It's like running into an alley in the city, you know? And you see everything that goes on nowadays. You need to have some clear space. So to be accessible and safe for city employees, for homeowners, for neighbors...
Yeah.
You don't want robbers going down the alley.
But this is an existing condition, so even with the, if the second floor stayed where it was, that's not, there's not going to be burglars running through the air, so there's really nothing to be done with the small thing.
It does shadow more of the alleyway because it's...
Oh, it does shadow it, but it's an existing condition. We can't make them make the, it wider, the 3-foot.
Right, right. So you're saying the walls, the side setbacks are what they are effectively, or, okay. All right, so, yeah, as indicated, I did speak with the attorney, Eric, and we came more or less to a compromise, one that I thought would be reasonable in that we would try to make everybody, all parties, of which Tim is a friend of ours next door, we are right to the west side. So we thought the, moving the setback to 12 feet as a compromise would be acceptable as for the gable to be lowered to whatever minimum for the, that the city requires.
Do you understand the benefits too that have been added, where they're going to cut that roof? You're going to have more...
Yeah, well, I actually asked for that because I thought that might reopen up an area that, because right now, the pitch is pretty high on the roof, so...
No, I'm talking about what we just added tonight, where that, that top roof is going to be cut back even more on the existing.
If you go to a hip roof, is that what was suggested? That would be nice, yeah.
That's going to be even better for you.
Yeah, yeah.
And the side that was eliminated is going to make it less impact on your behalf, too.
Yeah, yeah, very good. Okay, so, and the third item was, I forget, we had 2 or 3? I wrote it down, it's on me. Oh, yeah, I also requested that, and this was actually a concern of the neighbor too, but that as it goes to the extension of the 4 feet, that we would offset the window, the rear window, to at least begin just inside of our rear window, which is at the edge of the back of the property. So in essence, we're offsetting the window about 7 feet from the back of the house.
You agreed to that?
Yes, we're going to make sure that this house doesn't look into his house. We're going to offset and coordinate the windows.
The request being so as not to have it looking directly down into our back area. Yeah, that's pretty much a...
Thank you.
Can I, can I understand, Joe, which window are you objecting to?
The rear bedroom window.
Well, that...
Here.
Oh.
We're going to coordinate the location so they're not directly close.
Joe, do you see what he's saying? Do you see where he said he's placing the new rear window?
Yes, yeah. Well, that's on the old design process with the back, so I'm suggesting for that point we put a new shade.
Did you see where he said he's putting the new window? Could you show him again, Bill?
He didn't show him. He said he's going to coordinate it with...
Yeah, but are we making that a condition, or is that just something we're leaving to them?
I don't think...
I would just say the condition, make the condition just not in the sightline for the first floor.
Why do we have to get involved in that? We don't care if people are looking in each other's windows.
Okay, all right.
I don't think we need to get involved in that.
I'll take it out.
I can put it on the record, we're not going to have windows looking directly into our windows. And my client doesn't want Mr. Pesci to go to respect with the hips, so we're fine both ways.
So I don't know if that's an item that can be documented or put in the resolution, but...
Well, do you want that, because it's really, we don't care if people look in each other's windows.
I guess we'll have a gentleman's agreement.
And again, it's on the record now before the board that...
Right, that you will take care of that.
I'll put that you'll minimize the view. Correct. Location. We'll put that as a condition.
Okay. Got it.
I don't want to pin them to a window location when they have to redesign the house. That would be tough.
No.
So you're going to agree that it's not going to be directly across the rear window and...
Right, well, and also inset from the extension, the 4-foot extension beyond it.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Joe.
Anyone else in the public like to speak? Public portion is closed. Any other comments from the board? I'd like to comment. This case didn't have a chance in hell, and I think you did a great job of, maybe you still don't, but I congratulate you on the things that you did.
I really think it's a testament also to Mr. Rubin, who contacted me when Mr. Pesci called him, and we were able to spend the last 3 days with Mr. McLeese and my client, Mr. Kohler, going through what would be acceptable and not. So as usual, I think the board gets it right, hopefully, in this case for sure.
The condition, but most of the credit goes to Mr. Waszleski, because those 2 changes were very significant. And the hip in the rear, to me, creates just as much open space as if you pushed it back flat another 4 feet. Any other conditions are 8 sets of revised plans showing the second-floor rear setback a full 12 feet from the rear property line, hip design, the rear second-floor roof line. Three, eliminate the left-side second-floor gable. And finally, show only 4 bedrooms by changing the small first-floor bedroom to an office by eliminating the closet and...
Moving the wall.
And number 5...
And moving the wall.
By eliminating the closet and moving the wall. And finally, the windows will be adjusted to assure privacy between the 2 neighbors.
Do you hear a motion?
I'll second the motion. May it, one second?
Pinky.
May it?
No. Jim always makes it, and Pinky second it.
Tom Collins?
To me, this is a poorly conceived concept of how to expand a house. And what we've done here tonight is, we tried to cut off some fat, and everybody looks at it and says, oh, wow, this is better. It's really not. It's really not. And what we're trying to do here is, we're trying to be too greedy and keep a whole big first floor instead of opening up the first floor a little bit and plop a whole new house on top of it. It's just not good for the neighborhood. It's not improving that neighborhood in any way. There's no attributes to this. We're not gaining any green space. We're making a bedroom into a study, which is going to be converted back to a bedroom so they don't have to have more parking. I mean, that happens, but to me, I just, there's just no way I can, I can vote for this. It's just not, not a good thing for Margate.
Clem Wazleski.
I appreciate and agree with many of Tom's points, but I think the only way to accomplish what he would like to see would be for a tear down and a new house, which doesn't seem to be in the cars and we can't require. I think with the changes that the applicant has agreed to, we've got another sandy gift that we can at least live with. I vote yes.
Mike Richman.
Like we said, the first floor is, we can't force them to, you know, cut another foot and a half off the house. I think that the concessions that the Kohlers made were good ones. Okay, so I'm going to vote for it.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Jim Gallantino.
At first I thought you were working on a slice of pie. He cuts so much out of it, I thought it was a, I thought there wasn't anything left of the pie to present in front of the board. So, I, I mean, you know, I'm pro-flood. The raison de structure to elevation, he's a neighbor, they're a neighbor, they're in the same, we're all on the same little block here. They're going to be affected by our city little hall. And I think that's a detriment in itself. There's no parking out here in the summer. The city employees take a lot of parking out, which doesn't help to the people who live here. But we try to accommodate them as best we can by parking down further and not in front of their houses, as to the, which has nothing to do with the variances, but it is about the parking for the additional space. I, I do agree with Roger about the park, about the bedroom being removed, and now it's an office, but you did remove the closet. So hopefully, when they do the construction, I'll make sure that they don't put the closet back in. With all being that and the roof line changes, I don't see any detriment, so I vote yes.
Margaret Guber Nolte.
I think with the modifications to the design, which creates less impact, light and air for the neighbors, the neighbors seemed happy with the changes. I don't think you can force someone to take their house down and rebuild a new construction. I think aesthetically, it certainly is pleasing to the eye, and I vote in favor.
Mike Cristaldi.
I think with making the changes to make the neighbor happy and everything else that they did with it, I approve.
Rich Patterson.
I, I also, I understand some of Tom's comments, but like Clem said, the only alternative is to tear the house down, and that's, I don't think that's up to the board to tell the guy that, sorry, you're going to have to tear your house down. I think it's, like I said, you, you came a long way. My first thought, and when I looked at this project, was greed. You're crazy. What are you trying to do here? And what you've done, and what Clem suggested tonight, I think really helps. It's not a perfect solution, but I think you really compromised with the neighbor, and I vote yes. You've minimized the impact.
Application passes six to one.
Next case is MJS Premier Homes LLC, seventeen North Douglas Avenue, block two oh four point oh three, lot eleven, in the S twenty-five district, for C variances, for setbacks, and possibly others. Taxes and what are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied.
Roger Rubin?
President, if you'd like to give us that, please.
I do. The subject property is a one-story aging, single-family cottage-style home set three steps up from a low elevation on a lot of thirty-five by sixty-two and a half, or two thousand one hundred eighty-eight square feet. Originally, the owner submitted a proposal to the staff committee to elevate the existing house and add a second floor. This would have perpetuated a number of existing nonconformities, such as deficient left-side setback of two point nine, deficient combined-side setbacks of ten point eight compared to thirteen required, deficient rear yard of four point three instead of twelve and a half required, deficient driveway of only seven point nine feet, deficient landscaping, and excessive building coverage of fifty-one percent where forty is permitted. Instead of elevating and adding a second floor, hmm, sounds a little familiar, the presentation herein, per the plans of Peter Weiss Architect, creates a brand-new two-and-a-half story home, which conforms in all particulars to zoning with one exception. It has four bedrooms and a den, front porch and second-floor deck, rear yard patio and a shed, and its height falls within the twenty-eight feet of the first-floor elevation of eleven that is required. Both side yard setbacks are met, and the front-house setback at eleven feet one inch is an improvement not only of the existing house, but is double the requirement, the required front wall setback of five and a half feet per the two-hundred-foot surface. Front and total lot landscaping meets the code, and the driveway is a legal nine feet one inches wide. Also, of course, the first floor meets the prescribed FEMA flood elevation. Variances required are, two, lot width and area, there are variances due to the demolition. Forty feet and twenty-five hundred square feet are required compared to the existing thirty-five feet and twenty-one eighty-eight. And the exception to zoning per the Weiss plan is the rear setback, where twelve and a half feet is the requirement, and it is designed at eleven feet eight inches. Comments? Site visits will clarify if this ten-inch variation impacts neighbors. Two, the present rear setback of four point three feet is dramatically improved upon, albeit in a higher house. Three, the lot width of thirty-five feet creates a narrow house width of twenty-one feet due to required side setbacks, and the applicant states that the ten additional inches of depth, and keep in mind, building coverage is still within the required forty percent, significantly improves upon the house, which will, of course, have to be evidenced in testimony. The house being demolished was twenty-four feet wide. No conditions are suggested.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rubin. Chris Bayless, property principal, Michael Sherman, Liz Marty, Mike bought the property at seventeen North Avenue. Roger said, was initially going to raise it and build a second floor after getting into it, looking at the property, going, now, addition, while this was expected with existing footprint.
He's talking to the mic, Chris.
Existing footprint on a, on a narrow lot makes those existing nonconformities, for instance, the two point nine feet on the left side, makes that much more significant on the neighbors. With that, what's been decided is to tear that house down, not conform in many respects, build a new house, and you know Mike's new to this, when he's not asking for any side yard setback variances on a thirty-five-foot lot. The request, the request this evening is to conform with a new home in all respects to the zoning controls, the only exception being ten inches to the rear, where right now it's, it's like three feet.
That's great, Chris.
Thanks, Rich. Pete?
Peter Weiss?
I do.
Pete, would you be kind enough to just show the board what the existing rear yard setback is, what is proposed, and how the rest of the property is going to perform?
The existing rear yard setback is four point three feet. We're also very close to the property line on the, on the left side. And as Roger mentioned, the existing building only has seven point nine feet on the right side, so even though there's driveway there, it's not a legal parking space because, you know, it's less than nine feet wide. So we did toy with the idea of raising the existing building and adding another floor, which we could have done probably without variances. But I think I convinced Mike, or we convinced Mike, that it would be better to build a whole new building, get a nice better, or a nicer product, provide sort of adequate parking, which we wouldn't be able to do if we didn't build new. So all in all, we're increasing, or increasing the conformity of the building because we're reducing the existing nonconformities. We thought it was important to keep five feet on the left side, so we meet the setback on the left side. On the right side, we're providing nine feet for a parking space, so that gave us the width of the building that we have. And in an effort to still get a, you know, a nice usable building and still be able to maximize the building coverage without exceeding it, we're asking for an extra ten foot in depth to the building.
Good.
Let's, did I say ten feet?
You can have ten inches.
He was going to go for ten feet.
Pete, do you think that ten inches will have an impact on the neighbors to the rear, in light of the existing conditions and on the surrounding belt effect?
Well, the neighbor to the rear actually is fairly close to the property line too, but we're certainly improving that by going from four feet roughly to almost twelve feet. So I would say it's an improvement.
What's above the second floor, you see, steps the house in, improve all the setbacks a little bit, all the...
Yes, I forgot.
Just agree with him. Any questions from the board? Is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment? Public portion is closed.
I can have a question.
Well, you got to speak up.
Well, you moved too fast. Is this a third-floor deck on this, on this house here, on the side of it? Is there a third-floor deck up there?
There are conditions.
Are they for air conditioners?
Yeah, that's the only for condensing units, that's become commonplace.
It's for fire exits.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
No conditions.
Motion, please? I'll make a motion. Will you approve the application? I did already.
Unlike the case before it, you can see that this gentleman is a fireman in Margate City, and he appreciates egress around properties because he has to want to navigate them. And I, I compliment you, Mike, you are absolutely doing this the right way. You're bringing it into conformity, you're making Margate better, you're improving the neighborhood, getting rid of an old flood property while making things better for the neighborhood. I vote a hundred percent in favor of it.
Clem Wazleski.
Very good to see a new development on such a small property that requires essentially no variances, that the ten inches in the rear is negligible. It's an improvement, it'll make Jimmy very happy with the flood, and it'll make Tom very happy with the circulation around it. I vote yes.
Mike Richman.
Yeah, I think the undersized lot is a hardship, and I really don't see any, anything that's detrimental with the rear yard setback variance. I, I'm going to vote yes.
Jim Gallantino.
I think this is a trend on the street. I don't think anybody else has tried this development on a small of a lot, so maybe it might start a little revolution.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Margaret Guber Nolte.
I vote, I vote in favor of the application for the same reasons as stated by Mr. Tom Collins.
Mike Cristaldi.
I approve the application.
Rich Patterson.
You must be buying all your building materials from him, because he doesn't say nice things about anybody.
That's not...
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you pick that up? Yes, that was a yes.
Strike everything before just yes.
The application passes seven to nothing.
Next case is Stephen and Gail Cameraman, twelve North Summer Avenue, block two twenty, lot eleven, in the S forty district, to grain of C variances for side yards. Is this the right one?
Yeah. Last one.
And rear setbacks and possibly others.
I just wanted to ask.
What?
Did you announce that this case is all, that the side ward is all?
Oh, no, I didn't.
Maybe you should do that.
Well, I've just been informed that case number twelve, side water, will not be heard tonight.
It was withdrawn.
It was withdrawn. If anybody is here for that, I apologize.
Roger Rubin?
I didn't finish.
Okay. Yes, I do. Subject property is a one-story, flat-roofed, two-bedroom-plus-office, single-family home on a lot of fifty-three by eighty, or forty-two, forty square feet. Per the plans of Peter Weiss Architect, they propose to place an eight by, an eight-on-twelve pitched roof on the house and on the attached garage, creating water protection as well as attic storage space, a potential space to convert to an additional bedroom and/or other function. At the moment, it is not proposed to be finished, and in the future, any finishing could be done without board action if no more than four bedrooms resulted. Variance is required. Side setback on the right side, eight feet is required versus only two point nine-two feet to the new front portion of the roof. So the variance applies only to the first five feet of the bottom triangle of the new roof. And side setback on the left, eight feet is required versus two point nine-oh to the same portion of the new roof, which covers only the garage in front. And combined side setbacks, nineteen point sixty-one required versus combined two point nine plus two point nine-two, or five point eight-two. Don't forget roof only. And rear setback, sixteen feet required versus five point two-five feet to the new roof. So it is the edge, ten point seven-five feet of the roof that is the subject of the variance. All the variances are triangular edges of roof, sides and rear comments. If approved, it should be subject to satisfaction of the construction official that the FEMA fifty percent rule is complied with, if not, the approval is nullified. Two, the building will be weatherproofed and therefore safe for the longtime owners and aesthetically improved in the process. There is no question that even with the roof expansion, this house's mass and presence upon the neighborhood is less obtrusive than the new house to the right, which met all zoning requirements. Three, all setback variances are roof edges, not vertical walls, and in fact, the roof overhangs are reduced from the existing flat roof overhangs. Three, the total house height is only twenty-three feet above elevation eleven, and this modest height is only in the centermost sections of the house, not the edges. Five, I agree with the applicant's assertion that, quote, "Certainly, a new home on the property or a substantial renovation would be significantly more detrimental than what is being proposed," unquote.
Thank you very much. Chris Bayless, Cameraman's, the Cameraman's are in Florida for the winter, and I'm not being rude, but Mr. Cameraman, Mr. Cameraman was in a terrible accident years and years and years ago, and...
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Mr. Cameraman was in a terrible accident years and years and years ago, resulting in a bunch of infirmities, including like a prosthetic neck and many other parts of his body. He winters in Florida. He asked me to tell you that, not to be disrespectful, but he can't be in the cold weather at all, he's got really bad problems physically. Nonetheless, the application before you is very straightforward. They are eliminating the flat roof and in favor of a roof that meets the Margate slope requirement. While they were doing that, they did increase the ceiling height at the ridge to convert that second floor to a bedroom, if at some point in future they decide to do that with grandkids or whatnot. The, the site is sufficient to handle the parking. The setbacks were really as a result of the eaves that extend into the setbacks. But for Roger, there, Roger, there is a dormer, a rear elevation, has a setback of about ten feet, which would be included. Other than that, there's no expansion of footprint. It is, it is what it is. The, all the building walls at grade are going to stay at the same setback, and the second floor, second floor setback increases as it moves up because it really... And the second floor, second floor setback increases as it goes up because it really is a function of simply building a pitched roof where there is now a flat roof, which they have had nothing but problems with. Pete, would you like to explain the plan briefly to the board and what those variances are?
Peter Weiss? Yes, I do.
Pete, you designed it in plan from Cameron.
Yes.
And essentially, it is just converting the flat roof to a roof that they pitched.
Yes.
And the variances are sort of about as a result of the existing roof eve encroachments and the existing footprint encroachment.
Yes.
Would you just go around the house and show the board what we're talking about if you would, just quickly? And I say quickly because I've been told to say it.
I guess this house was built in the 50s. It was kind of a period house. It's got a flat roof, deep eaves, especially on the south side, they were like three-foot deep or so, probably for sun exposure and that kind of thing. So what we propose to do is nothing on the first floor, other than adding a stair to get to the attic. The existing roof, as I mentioned, is flat. It's been a continuous maintenance problem for the Cameraman's over the years, and right now it needs to be replaced again, and they don't see any reason to keep replacing the flat roof every, seems like every several years, a fair amount of money, when they can put a, you know, gable roof on it, pitched roof, and alleviate a lot of their problems with their roof. So if we change the roof shape at all, we'd have to come for a variance, even if we just went to the minimum 512. So we said, well, why don't we make it a little bit steeper, create some volume up there? We can develop it later in the future if we want, add a couple rooms. So that was, you know, the impetus for the project.
And so Pete, the existing setbacks are what, does this take the variance with respect to both sides and the rear?
Yes.
And the second floor, should it ever be a habitable, should ever be something that they use, that actually meets the setback requirements? That's been tucked in so that livable area is within the setback lines?
Needs the setbacks on the sides, this little piece in the back, encroaches into the rear yard, little dormer.
And otherwise, there's no changes to the footprint at the first floor?
Correct.
That's all I have for Mr. Patterson for Mr. Weiss.
Mr. Gallantino? They met the 50%? They met the 50% rule?
I was just looking at that. I was gonna ask Pete. Pete, usually on your plan, you put down square footage of addition. It's not on this one. What do you just guess? Usually put down?
Well, I mean, it's attic space, so it's not really an addition.
It's a condition. If it doesn't mean it, they don't get it.
You said it was proposed space for future expansion. It's an addition.
Well, that could be...
We will accept as a condition the approval that the number of, the number of catch-up are...
It's already a condition in there, so that's...
What's the square footage? It has to be determined.
If we approve it, it's null and void if it doesn't meet the 50%. That's already in there.
I mean, that... Give me a half square footage.
What are you talking about?
Second floor.
What's it have to do with the case?
Roger, I'll explain it.
It has nothing to do with it.
The second floor that Pete's putting on is not really an addition. He's considering it adequate. It's attic habitable space, which is the seven-foot square. The seven-foot square goes in imaginary space on the second floor. So I was just trying to get at Pete what that seven-foot habitable space would be in that space. But if it doesn't meet the 50, if it doesn't, if it goes over to 50%, Chris said, then we shoot it down.
You're talking about a building code requirement, not a zoning requirement.
Yes, building code.
That's what I'm saying. This has nothing to do with us tonight, so we'll move on. We have to ignore. Anyone here from the, anything else, Craig? Tom? Clem?
Chris?
If you ask how many square feet.
Am I correct that the only reason that the roofs need variances is because they're covering existing areas that are already within the setbacks, right?
You're exactly right. Actually, the eaves are being reduced by about six or eight inches.
I wanna make, I wanna make sure the board understood that.
That is correct.
Anyone here from the public? Public force is closed. Any other comments by the board? Is there any condition?
I have no conditions.
Your motion? Jim already made the motion. Would you second?
Tom Collins?
Peter, you did a really nice job here. I like you taking a 50s, 70s-style house and bringing it into the 2015 without creating any hardships or impacts on the neighborhood. I think aesthetically, you're making the neighborhood better. It's gonna improve the neighborhood, and other than that, there's no real detriment to this, so I approve.
Clem Moslaski?
I think the addition of these pitched roofs brings the house much more into conformance with the architecture of the neighborhood, and I see no negative aspects. I vote in favor.
Mike Richman?
I think the new facade definitely is an improvement in our neighborhood, and I would vote yes.
Jim Gallantino?
I approve this application.
Margaret Gubernalty?
For the same reasons previously stated, I approve the application as well.
Mike Cristaldi?
Show me a flat roof and I'll show you a leak. I don't blame him. I approve.
Rich Patterson?
I agree for the same reasons Margaret Gubernalty agreed.
The application passes seven to nothing.
Thank you.
Make a motion to close the meeting?
No. I'd like to open it up for public comment. General comments, please. Does he need to be sworn in?
Stephen Altman?
Wait a minute. Does Jackie need to stay for this?
Does she even need to be sworn in?
Does Jackie need to stay?
Okay, you're staying. Go ahead, be sworn in.
I'm PH. 9003 Amherst Avenue, Margate.
Yes, ma'am.
As I said, I live at 9003 Amherst Avenue. My next-door neighbor at 9001 appeared before you for variances to elevate their home to a height of eight feet, nine inches.
What's the cross street?
Between Union and Vendo. They're on the corner of Union. They elevated their home to eight feet, nine inches to accommodate a garage under their home. When the Wolf Company elevated the house on a Friday afternoon, on Saturday morning, it was a bright, sunshiny day, and my house received no direct sunlight on that side of my house. The house next to them on Union, 302, is also, has received a variance to raise their home to accommodate a garage. I would urge you all to take a look at the house as it currently is at 9001. You'll see that it's really an unattractive elevation, and what I'm urging you to do is look at the houses with smaller footprint, like my house and these other two houses, going forward. I think if you look at what's happening to the neighborhood, it's an unattractive elevation to accommodate a garage. I'm all in favor of the elevations. I think that's a really wonderful thing, but I don't think this improves the neighborhood. It certainly has impacted my house, and they don't even have the third floor up yet.
Steve, let me interrupt you here. How much, the minimum they could have gone up without a variance, how much more did they get?
I don't know. I'm sorry.
I didn't have time to research. I don't know.
I'm just trying to think even if you would have been impacted just the same if they hadn't gotten the extra foot or two. If they had gone up to the 11-foot, there's nothing we could have done.
Okay.
So that's the state law. So if they needed another foot or two to get a garage under there, you have to consider what they could have gone to without a variance.
Very good. Is the house, I...
It's a blockhouse.
I know the house. Is the house still, did they get a variance for height for the...
I think they did.
I'm sorry. I didn't, Steve, I didn't have time to research exactly what the variance was. I don't know.
Peter, before you leave.
Is that his house?
They got a couple questions for you. You did the Union, Union Amherst. Union Amherst.
Well, I'm just trying to say, I mean, I understand what you're saying. The frustrating part is they could have done it maybe two foot less without having to get variances, and we have no say in that. So we may have given them more, and we're now looking favorably, saying, well, if you're gonna already have six feet there, if you get another foot, you can get a car in there. But we try to look at the neighborhood that way. And the sad thing is, as a neighbor, you didn't know exactly what the impact was, or if you did, you would have been there at the meeting saying, hey, this is gonna block everything. And that really has an impact on the board when neighbors show up. They never do, but we welcome them when they do.
Yes.
Because it's your neighborhood, and you know it, and we don't. Well, he knows it.
Yeah, he does. Anyway, my purpose was just simply to encourage taking a look at this project and see if it influences your thinking with houses that are of similar size going forward.
You sat through this meeting tonight, didn't you?
Yes.
There was the one house where it would have been much better if they tore it down, but we can't say, sorry, you gotta tear it down. I mean, just realize that our hands are tied sometimes, but I fully agree and understand what you're saying, but sometimes with the best thing for the solution, this is something we can force on the people. We could stop them from getting an extra two feet, but I don't know if that would have had any impact, any less impact on you or not.
But Rich, when you say we can't force them to tear it down, I disagree with you there.
Well, we can say, no, you're getting no variances.
I'm just saying that if you don't approve it, then they're gonna come back and redesign because they have that property, and they'll do something that they want, like Mike Sher did. He was gonna raise it, do the thing, and everybody thinks I'm crazy, but I, well, Steve, because once they go up, we don't go around, well, we see the one over here next to him because...
Did you say you're crazy?
I am crazy. So are you.
All right.
That's why I know you. But it's not a matter of forcing anybody to do anything. It's a matter of just making them come back and do it right. That's all.
I certainly have thought about elevating my home for the purposes of flood, but I really looked at it, and I wouldn't elevate it so that I could put a car in a garage because it would not be positively affected in a storm. I mean, if you have your car in your garage, it's gonna get wiped out anyway.
Right.
I thank you all for listening.
Steve, Johanna just found, actually, my review of the house, which was in February. How'd you find that?
It doesn't surprise me that she has it.
She's amazing.
Anyhow, apparently, there was...
It was densing.
There was no variance revolving around the elevation of the first floor. February of 2015, we were already abiding by the state law that did not allow more than three feet above the BFE. The variances were front setback on both streets and combined side setbacks, but the first-floor elevation was not a variance.
And the setbacks were pre-existing.
It was, there was actually no variance related to that height.
Was variances relating to setbacks on the second...
Setbacks.
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
Steve, weren't you at the meeting? You were noticed.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but I didn't, I didn't see it until that Saturday morning when I woke up and saw how much light has been cut off from my house. Now, I imagine since there to my north and east, they'll actually block my house in nor easters, and I'm satisfied.
I'm now recalling, the side yard setback was the filling in of that alcove.
Yes.
That had no effect on you at all.
No, not at all.
And I think, Pete, you could correct me if I'm wrong, were the front setbacks on the two streets porches, or front porches?
Well, the front porch is gone. I don't know what they're gonna end up doing there.
I think...
Do you remember?
The front setback, as I recall, the existing building only encroached by a couple inches because all those buildings lined up, but they had added vinyl siding at some point. So it was literally like two inches closer to the street than the next two houses up. The primary variance was the front setback on Union, I guess it is?
Yeah, the side street.
Where, you know, we had a more or less square lot, and the lots behind it were much deeper, so, you know, the front setback was fairly substantial on Union. That was the significant variance in that case.
Okay, thanks.
All right.
I thank you all very much.
Thanks, Steve.
All right, thank you, Steve.
By the way, I think this is a remarkable committee. I go to a lot of commission meetings and such, and it's so refreshing to hear you comment on your votes. I think that's just so democratic and a wonderful process. Thank you.
All right, well, the, sit down. We're not done. We're still, we're still in comments. No motions. The good news is that Roger's buying drinks for everybody after the meeting. The bad news, Roger will explain to you.
That's it?
That's it.
Can I introduce?
That's your introduction. You're done.
I have decided effective March 1st to get the hell out of here and call it a, call it 42 years and be done. So I'm retiring, and I'll be here for a few more months to...
Drinks on the house.
Deal with some kind of a transition, and then I'll move on to wherever zoning officers go, you know.
Hey, Roger?
It's been, it's been a great run. I hate to, I hate to give it up, not, but the, I will, Jim, and you gotta watch after Jimmy. Jimmy needs, you know, a lot of hugs because I, we, Jimmy's my second wife. We have really worked together very, it's out now. We've worked together very, very closely, and that's why things work so well here.
And with your chairman, they work very...
And let me tell you something. I've sat with boards since 1974. This is the greatest board ever. The one right here today. Well, that's, you added a lot of fun to the, and...
I will really, the board will miss your guidance, I can say that.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you.
Greg? I said the board will miss your guidance and your wisdom and whatever else is there, but it's, it really, the, you know, I know we have a lot of business before the board, but most of the business is sort of taken care of, taken care, and I'm sure Pete can testify to this, that it's taken care ahead of time of, you know, this just doesn't look good, and you can bring anything you want before the board, but this is what the, you know, I don't wanna say this is what the board's gonna say, but you get the gist of it. This isn't a good case. And so much of the crap is cleared out before it gets to us, and which that makes our job so much easier.
Pete, Pete has been an excellent, working with you over the years has been great because he challenges me more than almost anybody else. He understands the ordinance, the implications. We've had some knock-down, drag-out arguments, and sometimes, he's so logical, I just have to say that's because, because that's the way I want it. Get out of here. He rolls his eyes and he leaves. Before we get too sentimental, I have two more announcements to make. Number one, this wonderful lady to my right today was sworn in as the, actually, only the fourth city clerk in my 42 years here, and I just wanna congratulate her and wish her the best. And also, on December, we have seven cases on December 17th. Merry Christmas. And we already have six cases for January, and the chairman has decided if we run significantly over, we'll maybe make two meetings in January to catch up. No, I might not make both meetings, but you guys have to. I will, I will.
We can't have too much upheaval. If you're official city clerk, are you maintaining this job?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Roger, Roger, how many cases are we hearing in the next two months are about this three-foot flood elevation thing?
Yeah, I would have to look. There's, there's a couple. There's one, two every month. Yeah, they keep coming up. Well, you guys have to understand, Jimmy and I, we went all out with Rich. We went all out, and we composed a letter from Jimmy, me, and Rich to the city solicitor. We had a knock-down, drag-out, two-hour meeting in which we actually, we needed the solicitor to agree that he could either make an interpretation, that we didn't have to follow that state law, or suggest a change to the ordinance that would go around it legally. And by the end of the meeting, we had badgered him and bludgeoned him sufficiently that he seemed to agree. Forty-eight hours later, he wrote a long letter.
Skaving.
Just backed out, down completely. He said, no, look, as a solicitor, basically, there's nothing I could do or say. It's wrong. It would not be right. I don't recommend it. You gotta stay with it. It is what it is, and we have to live with it. So that leaves us with absolutely nothing to do but lobby our state senators and representatives to try to change the state law, which we have made contact. But we can make the. Wait a minute. Well, you, you have been wise enough to realize, like tonight, when that's the, when, when it's all about the stupid state law, you just discount that.
Well, then, tell Mr. Palmasano that he doesn't come in with questions at the end when it's a done deal already.
Roger, did you hear that?
Did you hear that? Did you hear that?
Roger, I got one question. Stan, even though our city solicitor has advised us not to move forward with this three-foot change, as the planning board, why can't we recommend it to the planning board and ask them? Why does it have to?
The city commission?
Yeah.
We can.
Well.
Because the city commission's, is gonna go along with.
The solicitor's gonna give them advice.
The solicitor is telling them no.
No, 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 no. That's not the point. The point is, we want to amend the ordinance to allow us to go forward with it, changing the variance.
He said in that letter, not only can't you do it by administrative fiat, but he urges us not to go ahead with that. We'd just be getting into a battle with him, and we, it would be unseamly.
You're retiring. What do you care?
I don't, so I, just let me do it.
Yeah, you do.
Back to some important business here.